Hospital pass them very nice houses. But I gather there's also a history of racial restrictions, racial bans on who can own a home. Do you still see that history showing up today in your neighborhood?
I think unfortunately I do a little bit. You know, we have racially restricted deeds in Spring Valley, and it's definitely one of the wealthier neighborhoods. My dad is Puerto Rican. He wouldn't have been able to own a house there around 50 years ago. And so we're one of the few minority families, you know, on our street, on our block, going to our elementary school. So you definitely do still see that history, but we're it's slowly getting better.
Understand. This is funny. I gather when your colleagues on the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, the ANC, gathered, you know, on Zoom for some of the meetings, you had to act as kind of the IT guy for your colleagues?
I have done that, definitely. There has been, you know, we've been on Zoom for a couple of years at this point, but we still, you know, accept a lot of public comment. That's a big part of our meetings. And so you do have to help some people, you know, know how to unmute and share their screens and text in the chat and, you know, not send a private message instead of a message meant for everyone or send a message meant for everyone when you really meant to send a private message. So there are all those things that definitely come into play. I saw there were some people complaining about my age online when I was running, and I saw a very funny comment where people, someone said that he thought there should be a mandate for everyone to have an 18-year-old, given that you have ANC meetings on Zoom so often now that we could really help with the technology. So I think, you know, growing up and attending classes online, you know, when during COVID and just in general, I definitely have a better, you know, grasp of technology than a lot of my colleagues on the ANC, and I do try to help them whenever I can with it.
When you meet with young people, I don't know if you meet with kids even younger than you, do you try to get young people engaged in public service, become civically engaged?
Yeah, absolutely. I think there is, especially with a lot of local issues, especially living in DC, you know, we don't have representation in Congress. And so I think the kids in who live in my city and who, you know, are native Washington and have lived through their entire life are even more jaded than the kids in other parts of the country because you don't have a senator to contact. And so I try to talk to them about local politics because a lot of kids do see that they're not particularly represented at all levels of the government. We have representatives who are so much older than us, and I think it would be a lot better for us to have, you know, a diversity of opinions when it comes to, you know, class and race and age especially. And I think that that is definitely a big factor in pushing young people to get involved. They want to see more people like themselves at all levels of government. And I think, you know, seeing people like me or like Maxwell Frost, who's the youngest member of Congress, I think 25, 26 years old, it's really, it gives a lot of hope to other people. And I think that when people can be those providers of hope, they definitely feel a lot more optimistic about getting involved.
Do you think, Quentin, about further public office for you? You're going to Princeton in the fall. While keeping your elected position as a neighborhood advisor, and let's be honest, it doesn't hurt to have the last name Roosevelt.
It definitely does help to have the last name. And I've definitely thought about other stuff. I think a lot of politics is sort of right place, right time and luck, but I would love to, depending on where I live when I grew up, run for state house, run for state senate, congress maybe. But, you know, I can't really predict my future out so far. I'm only 19 right now. I'm just trying to get through college and finish my term out.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know what they say, remember the name, which we will anyway. Quentin Cologne Roosevelt is a commissioner for his local advisory neighborhood commission in Washington DC. And on the side, he is a Zoom IT advisor for his colleagues. Quentin, thanks very much. Best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong.
And I'm Celeste Tedley. It's Here and Now.
I would like to invite everyone here today for a moment of silence or personal prayer and then to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for July 11th, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the Board of Supervisors at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. First item is opening ceremonies. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change fellow board members?
None.
Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. So C1 is resolution congratulating the Northside High School Boys Basketball Team winning the Virginia High School League Class III Championship. And so if the coach and the team would like to come forward at this time, I'll join you down there. And would the clerk please call, or excuse me, please read the resolution?
Would you like him to face this way or?
Yeah, that's perfect. Resolution congratulating the Northside High School Boys Basketball Team for winning the Virginia High School League Class III Championship. Whereas athletic competitions are an important and integral part of the team curriculum at schools in Roanoke County, teaching cooperation, sportsmanship, teamwork, and athletic skill. And whereas on March 10, 2023, the Northside Boys Basketball Team won the Class III State Championship at the VCU Segal Center in Richmond, Virginia after defeating Hopewell 58 to 52. And whereas the Vikings led by as many as 17 points in the first half before the Blue Devils came back and took a four-point lead in the fourth quarter. But the Vikings made key plays down the stretch to get the victory thanks to Lawrence Cole, Cy Hardy, and Michael Harvey, who all scored in double figures, combining for 53 of the Vikings' 58 points. Whereas the team represented their school and community with great character, poise, and sportsmanship, they are a true asset to Roanoke County. And whereas the Vikings are coached under the dedicated leadership of Coach Bill Pope and with the win notched the 620th victory of his coaching career and was named the Class III Boys Basketball Coach of the Year by the Virginia High School League. And whereas senior Lawrence Cole and sophomore Cy Hardy made the Class III All-State First Team. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to the members of the Northside High School Boys Basketball Team. DeShawn Anthony, Lawrence Cole, Cy Hardy, Jaden Smith, Xavier Garrison, Nick Crawford, DJ Vi, Michael Harvey, Michael Pankey, Kai Logan, Elijah Trigg, Jamari Lavender, Jevon Gibson, Will Smith, and Kayvon Brown. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its best wishes to the members of the team, the coaches, and the school in their future endeavors.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So at this time, the resolution has been read. I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. We are so proud of you all, and we really appreciate you all coming today. Coach Pope, do you want to say a few words?
I would love to say a few words.
If you would.
You guys know that. Well, thank you so much for inviting us, including us on your very busy schedule. And we love being here, and this is such an honor. And that's, unfortunately, we are missing a few guys, being that it's July and a few coaches too. But, you know, it's just a great thing. And I just want to say about this team, obviously, they were really a fantastic team. They won a school record 29 wins, 29 and 1. But the thing about them was they always had that energy, that enthusiasm, always had that kind of that prove it to me. They wanted to prove it each day, and that's what allows you to do something like that because at any point, it's very easy to suddenly think, well, we figured it out, we've got it, and you start resting in what you've already accomplished. Instead, you're going in there each day with, we want to prove something else today. And I think that's what is one of the many things that makes this group so special. And I'm so honored to be a part with these guys and to have coached them. So it's a real honor for me. So I'd like, can I quickly just introduce each guy there? So just call you guys out there quickly. We're missing Jay Shawn Anthony, but I'll mention the guys we're missing there. Lawrence Cole is right here. He's one of our captains, a senior.
Awesome.
Number 12, Cy Hardy, right back here, okay. Number 14, Jaden Smith, one of our seniors, captain also. Zay Garrison is not here today. Number 21, Nick Crawford is right here. Number 22, DJ Vi is not here today. Number 23, Michael Harvey is not here today. Number 24, Michael Pankey, where are you, Michael? There you are, okay. 32, Kai Logan. Okay, Kai. 34, Elijah Trigg, one of our seniors. There he is, back there. Number 40, Jamari Lavender, right next to me. Number 42, Javin Gibson, okay. Number 44, Will Smith is not here today. And number 50, Kavon Brown is not here today. Coach Wolf is right down here, and Coach Malave is right down here with me. So this is our staff also with us today, of course, my wife back here. Oh, yes, and also, I'm getting down to that, but thank you, Patty. My wife Patty back here, and our principal Jill Green, our fantastic principal is right back there. So, and then our manager over there is Will Dent is here, and I believe that is all. I hadn't forgotten. I was getting down there, Will. But again, thank you so much for this resolution. We'll put it in our showcase proudly, and again, thank you for having us here.
We are so proud of this team. Let's give them all a big hand. I had a couple of other details that I wanted to mention, and I know that you mentioned the 21, excuse me, 29 and 1 overall record, undefeated district record and regular season record, Blue Ridge District Regular and Tournament Champions, Northside Invitational Tournament Champions, final ranking number one in Class III, and number five in All-State Classification. Is that spectacular?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we are so incredibly proud of you. Ms. Green, you do a great job with these kids and the whole Northside community. Thank you. Thank you for the way that you won well and showed great character, and we are just extremely proud. Any of my board members want to say anything else? Mr. North?
Coach Pope, I don't know what the prescription is, but you just keep on refilling it because I know you were here about three years ago with the team, and it's great to have such great success. And these young men will go on and remember those great games and coaching, and probably some of them may even go into coaching yourself someday. Anybody interested in coaching one day? No? Okay.
Sometimes they help me with it, so I don't know.
Well, that's right. So congratulations on behalf of the Hollins community, which many of these young men live and partake in the sport. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And good luck to your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, Coach, congratulations, and you fine young men. It's that championship will live with you guys forever. I mean, it's there, there. So, and that's a great award. As a parent, I've been to the state final with my sons in soccer. We've touched that final game but just didn't come home. So glad y'all punched the ticket all. It looked like that Spotswood game was a close one.
We had a number of really close ones. It's one of the special.
I was reading the back of your T-shirts and 44-42, a close game. But congratulations, and I agree with Mr. North, keep it going, Mr. Pope.
Thank you so much.
Just congratulate all the young men. I think I was able to see you play one game, and you're a tremendous team. I give a lot of credit to the coach, but I give a lot of credit to you guys. It takes a while to pull a team together. You guys did a fantastic job.
Congratulations. I can't repeat everything they just said, but I do congratulate you for your state championship.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here and letting us join in your celebration. You all are terrific young men, terrific coach and principal, so thank you for being here. Let's take some pictures.
Let's do that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. See you, Coach.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
So item C2, recognition of library staff for receiving two awards from the Virginia Public Library Directors Association. James Blanton, Director of Library Services, welcome.
Thank you. It's great to be here to celebrate today. Before I get started, one thing I should also share, we've had some exciting times in recent days. We were able to reopen our Benton Mountain Library yesterday after a pipe freeze back in December. I'm sure you all remember that. And we had a really great reopening yesterday afternoon, and people were so excited and celebratory. It was wonderful. And we also recently reopened our Mount Pleasant one, which was a scheduled renovation, but both turned out fantastic. And I just wanted to say a thank you to all of you, to administration, to general services, to our team of staff members, and also special thanks to the Benton Mountain Community Center for hosting us during those many months that we were closed, and also to the fire station in Dustin for getting us in there for Mount Pleasant. So we really had uninterrupted service for the entire time, which is pretty phenomenal, and really just excited to be back up and running again.
You also got air conditioning.
Yes, that's right. Air conditioning is a beautiful thing this time of year, that's for sure. Well, we're here today to celebrate the achievements of some of our staff members. They've been recognized by the Virginia Public Library Directors Association. And I'm going to start with, and I should also share too, that these awards recognize us based on our service population, which is 50,000 to 200,000. This year, first up, we had an award given to Jennifer Whitcomb for being the outstanding Staff Member of the Year, which is pretty phenomenal. Just to say a little bit about Jen, Jen started her career with the library as a library assistant in the children's department at South County. And while working there, she applied to pursue a master's degree in library and information science with a focus on youth services and library management. In 2021, shortly before graduating, she moved into a senior library assistant position at the Benton Library where she is now. In her role there at Benton, Jen's responsible for providing services for children and teens, which is a very busy role, I can attest. For children's events, kids are always excited to see Ms. Jen, and they look forward to her storytime sessions and programs, which include everything from STEM topics to celebrating Benton's Arbor Day Festival. Through these activities, she's formed relationships with parents and caregivers, working to create a sense of community. And she's also established a wonderful rapport with our teen patrons, which is fantastic. She forms connections with them so they feel welcome coming to the library. She plans and implements a variety of programs for them, ranging from a regular teen book club to special events such as Nintendo Switch gaming with the Benton Police Department. She also assists in programming for all ages. She strives to offer programs that serve the interests of the community and stays aware of current happenings in the library world and trends for all ages. Most recently, she participated in planning our new Digilab at the Benton Library, which features technology to support audio, video, and photo preservation. Jen exhibits her dedication and commitment to the profession on a daily basis. When she's working at the library, one can find her interacting with patrons, assisting in technology needs, readers advisory, and the daily library tasks. And in addition to those duties, she assists in the management of the library when the need arises. She's intentional in cultivating professional relationships with her coworkers at the library and across the county, and she exhibits a kind and caring attitude, inspiring positive morale, and she regularly shares her experience and knowledge to support staff development. For example, recently, she assisted a staff member applying to graduate school to pursue a master's degree by providing information and assistance on navigating the program, and she's always willing to help and share her experience whenever the need arises. Jen excels in forging strong relationships, provides excellent customer service, and leads with a positive attitude in all her endeavors, and we're thrilled that she's been recognized as the Outstanding Library Staff Member of the Year. Will Jen say a few words?
Well, thanks so much for having me, and I'm just really appreciative of the recognition. I love working for Roanoke County Public Library. I love all my coworkers. I feel like it's a great place to grow. I'm having a great time, and I look forward to working for the library for a long time. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
And we have one more to celebrate.
Don't go too far.
Yeah, not too far.
Because I'm sure we're going to want to take pictures.
Yeah, if you want to stay here, that'd be fine. Our second item to celebrate, we also received the Outstanding Service Innovation of the Year for a program called Books to Grow, which is at South County Library. And here I have representing our children's department, Tara Smith and Julie Scanlon. Books to Grow is an expansion of the library's Books to Go service, which initially offered totes to local daycares. The expanded project offers a Storytime Kit in a Box service for parents, caregivers, and homeschoolers, supporting their efforts to focus on early literacy skills at home. Books to Grow kits include books, guided play items, and rhymes centered around a common theme in each tote. Themes include topics such as colors, shapes, numbers, animals, and weather. These kits provide a much-needed resource for parents and caregivers to foster early, excuse me, early literacy skills with toddlers and preschoolers. To prepare the kits, the children's staff at South County Library researched key topics in early literacy for toddlers and preschoolers. Then they curated book lists, educational toys, stories, and rhymes to create comprehensive educational experiences. In addition, feedback from parents and teachers was collected to learn what subjects and content they would like to see in the totes. Notably, feedback indicated they wanted content to mirror the library's popular storytime sessions so that they could replicate the experience at home or in the classroom. The program began in January and has been met with great enthusiasm. Kits can be reserved in the library's catalog, and they've been in demand since launch. They've circulated 72 times since going into circulation, which is pretty fantastic. And they continue to stay off the shelves. Parents have commented that the books and activities are perfect for their children and provided a great avenue for screen-free time, which is so important. We've also received enthusiastic feedback from homeschool groups that it is a wonderful resource to support their lessons. One factor also highlighted from the award review is that Books to Grow can easily be replicated in libraries across the state. So the program can also serve as a model for other libraries to utilize in serving families throughout Virginia. We're extremely proud of the team's efforts to put together this fantastic program and are excited to recognize this achievement here today. And I think we have a visual aid too to share. So Tara and Julian. What would be a good spot?
I think right, we're coming right up to the podium.
Okay. All right. So this is our wild animal kit. And just to have a visual, this is an example of something that can be done as a rhyme or song, Five Little Lions. And we like to have a variety of media in these. There's toys, hands-on learning for the kids, and then, of course, we have books. Yes. So the parents, the families, parents have loved these. They bring them back, and they're like, it's like storytime in a box. And we just had so much fun with it, and it's been a really, really great thing for us to have at our department.
It's pretty cool. We really appreciate all that you have done for our library system and especially these programs that have been highlighted. Let's give them a hand also. Excellent. And I'm sure that we're going to take a few pictures. Are there any comments from my fellow board members?
Yeah, I've got my granddaughter, and I need to borrow that for tonight. That's excellent idea, and congratulations to Jim and your staff, and you too. Great, great recognition and award and hard work.
Mr. North?
I'll be bringing Lane down when he gets older than eight months, although he's playing with some of those books and toys and objects and shapes. But that's a good idea. We have him on Tuesdays. We'll just come on down there to the library and visit because reading to him right now is something I've been doing, and he seems to enjoy that. He picks up the same couple of books, you know, he identifies the same books, and he smiles at one of them, so I guess it's good stuff.
Let me congratulate you on your degree. When I was in high school, when our obligation was, we had to memorize Dewey Decimal System. Congratulations.
Well, congratulations as well, but I think everybody, Jim and all the staff in the library system, because I mean, I get to, you know, whether it's in Benton or whether it's in Mount Pleasant, they're so thankful for the renovations in Mount Pleasant and what transition is taking place there. But I'm thankful for everybody that's in the library system and what they contribute to our citizens every day. So thank you.
And I know that my grandchildren really appreciate all the hard work and services that the Roanoke County Libraries provide. So thank you again for your outstanding work, and we really applaud you in these recognitions. It's really great. Is it time for some pictures?
Congratulations.
Did you want them to leave the box for you to play with? Item D1, ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $325,000.
As far as this grant goes, the $512,504 represents a second grant that will cover eight additional positions. We hope to fill those positions next year so that once school begins, we will have 16 total officers in the program. Currently, we are recruiting to hire both police officers and part-time SROs, so as the year continues, we hope to add to our ranks. The next step will be the reading of the second grant, and hopefully with the addition of that grant, we can begin to hire new SROs. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions of my fellow board members?
Question.
Yes, Mr. North?
Chief, that's a great job, and we appreciate that. I'm sure all of us do up here. But just one question. I noticed the grant, the second grant that we're going after expires next June 30th. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a grant that we would have to reapply for each year, but it is a four-year grant.
So, if we don't, if we have six of eight and we need, we just ask for an extension? Is that what we do to get that?
Well, whatever we use, we'll pay the match amount. We don't have to use the whole grant if we don't have eight officers.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. Chief Poindexter, I just want to thank you for your diligence in moving this forward while it's been said by someone on the school side. This hasn't been a high priority to us. It has been, and I know it's been a process to get through the grants and get all this into place and hire those folks and have them ready, but I just want to thank you for your diligence in moving this forward and getting us where we are today.
Well, thank you, but it's not me alone. It's the entire staff of the Police Department.
I understand that.
Again, I want to echo what Mr. Peters said. I think it's important to let our citizens know that these individuals will have specific certifications from the Commonwealth of Virginia, so we're not just putting anybody out there. We have, will have trained, certified people to protect the kids in the schools, and I think that's a credit to you and your staff, and it's important, very important.
Yes, they will be police officers. They will be employees. They will be sworn police officers.
That's excellent news. Thank you.
And I just had one quick question regarding, I heard, I think I heard you say, that are going back to the academy. So, are some of these hires that are going to be coming in, they have, maybe they're retired, and it has been too long of a lapse, and they have to go back?
One is a former Roanoke County Police Detective who retired, and his certification has expired, but we have reached out and made contact with him, and he's interested in coming back to help us out.
That's awesome.
So, has Chief Hall signed up yet?
He has not.
I just thought of that. Maybe he needs a little more time retirement.
There you go.
We appreciate what you're doing. This is a great work, and I know that it's a real concern of our citizens, and so we really appreciate your diligence and all of the Police Department's diligence in making this happen. We're very pleased, and so thank you for that. So, is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second?
Motion made.
Second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Item E, Second Reading of Ordinances. Ordinance accepting and appropriating $339,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the Roanoke County Police Department for law enforcement equipment. Chief Poindexter.
Yes. Again, we, our staff has worked to locate more grant money, and the good thing with this grant money is there is no matching amount from the county. So, these funds were awarded to us by DCJS as well.
(laughter).
And the background on this grant is that we were notified that we received the $339,000, so our staff worked to identify equipment that we needed, as well as equipment that was outdated and needed to be replaced. So, after we did that, we came up with a list of equipment purchases, and we prioritized those purchases, and this is a list of what we'll be purchasing with that grant money. The next steps will be the reading on July 11th, and once that is done, we'll begin making the purchases with the grant money. Do you all have any questions about that grant?
Any questions of my board members?
No question. Madam Chair, I move. We pass item E1.
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
This is especially good news when we don't have to have a match. Great news. Thank you so much. Item E3, Ordinance Accepting $200 -- I did. E2, Ordinance Accepting and Appropriating $170,680 in Grant Funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and $88,140.30 from the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection for the purchase and installation of an emergency generator at the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection Animal Shelter. Jessica Beamer, Director of Finance and Management Services; Mike Warner, Interim Executive Director, Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Board. This item is to conduct the second reading of an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds for the purchase and installation of an emergency generator on behalf of the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection. The county has received an award of $251,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management on behalf of RCACP for this purchase. Of this amount, $170,680, or 68%, is the state share, and the remaining $80,320, or 32%, is the required local match. But after obtaining some quotes for this project, the total cost came in slightly higher than the award, and it was for $258,820.30. RCACP has approved the capital funding for the local match portion of the grant, $80,320, and they have also approved the additional $7,820.30 needed to complete the project for a total RCACP contribution of $88,140.30. So, upon county approval and appropriation of the grant, RCACP will transfer these funds to be deposited to the county's grant fund. As such, there is also no fiscal impact to the county. After this project is completed and all the grant requirements are met, the county will then transfer the generator as a capital asset to RCACP. There have been no changes since the first reading held on June 27th, and therefore I recommend approval of the ordinance before you. I'm also lucky enough to have Mike Warner with me today if you do have any specific questions.
Any questions?
Nothing to do with the ordinance, but when are we going to make him an executive director instead of interim?[1066.13][1066.13](laughter). It's a longer interim, I don't think I would have seen, but, you know, interim. All jokes aside, I'll make a motion.
Please do. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item E2.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Mike, do you want to say anything?
No, sir.[1088.26][1088.26](laughter).
No.[1090.26][1090.26](laughter). Yes, yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all the good work that the center does. It's very much appreciated. Let's see, item E3, Ordinance Accepting $280,000. We have a lot of money we're talking about tonight.
Yeah.
Accepting $280,000 from the U.S. Department of Transportation and appropriating such funds to the grant fund, and accepting $18,333 from Bodatok County and appropriating such funds to the grant fund, and accepting $4,434 from the Town of Vinton and appropriating such funds to the grant fund, and reallocating $47,233 from fiscal year 2023 Planning Department operating funds to the grant fund, and to develop a comprehensive safety action plan for Roanoke County, Bodatok County, and the Town of Vinton as part of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Discretionary Grant Program. Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. The bipartisan infrastructure law established the Safe Streets and Roads for All, or SS4A, discretionary grant program to fund initiatives to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. The U.S. Department of Transportation has appropriated $5 billion for the SS4A program over the next five years. The first round of funding for fiscal year 2022 consists of up to $1 billion and has been split between planning and implementation grants. The SS4A program provides 80% federal funding for a 20% local match. Applicants must first have an eligible safety action plan in place in order to apply for implementation grants in subsequent rounds. Staff requested an action plan grant for development of a comprehensive safety action plan in partnership with the Town of Vinton and Bodatok County. Roanoke County was notified of a $280,000 award on January 31st, 2023, and executed a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation effective April 27th, 2023. Due to the original scope of services submitted with the grant application, the comprehensive safety action plan will officially begin on October 1st, 2023, and is anticipated to be completed within 15 months. The action plan will include crash analysis and mapping, strategic project prioritization, community engagement, including meetings with the Planning Commissions and Board of Supervisors and Town Council, the final action plan, and detailed conceptual plans and estimates for each locality's top prioritized project. It is anticipated that these top projects would then be submitted for funding as SS4A implementation projects in 2025. There have been no changes since the first reading on June 27th, 2023. The 20% match is split according to locality population, with Bodatok County at $18,333 in fiscal year 2023 funds. Town of Vinton match is $4,434 in fiscal year 2023 funds, and Roanoke County match is $47,233, which is available in fiscal year 2023 Planning Department operating funds. All funds will be deposited in the grant fund, and staff recommends approval of the attached ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
So, Ms. Cronice, we develop a plan, and we identify a variety of projects that would be implemented from the plan.
Yes.
Within this process, what is the role, VDOT, for example, or our Police Department? I mean, if we're looking at crash analysis and things like that. Is it possible that we could develop a plan to go in one direction, but VDOT may want to go in another direction, and we don't have the money either way? I guess I'm kind of wondering what the end game is with respect to the process.
Well, because we are comprehensive planners, we work with the Police Department and with VDOT and their data to determine what our highest safety impact areas are and where we need to focus. So, VDOT will be stakeholders in this process, the Police Department will be stakeholders, as well as the community. So, we have a process outlined with consultants, Timmons Group, who we've worked with in the past, to initiate this plan and have a variety of ways to obtain that data and feedback so that we can find, out of all of the data available, what is our, the location that we need to focus on first in terms of safety? And then we'll develop a project for it, submit it for funding, cross our fingers, and hope that we're successful.
I guess I not want, I know you have to go through the planning process and don't want to eliminate that, obviously, but it would seem to me that we've talked a lot about 460, and I look at some of the safety aspects that are involved with that road and all of the different initiatives we've tried to accomplish, and we've always struck out in large measure because it's so expensive to do anything on 460. I guess I'm hoping that maybe this would, this would be a catalyst that might help move that process forward to try to address some of the issues. And I'm not, I'm sure there's other areas. You could talk about 419, you can talk about 220. I'm sure you have a whole laundry list of different safety areas. It's just 460 seems to be sort of at the top of our list and has been for many years. And I guess I really hope that this might add one more support as we try to go forward to accomplish some of the 460 goals.
460's plan has already been approved by VDOT in smart scale for three intersection improvements in the county, not to mention the city, but also the 220-460 intersection. It's supposed to start engineering this fall with construction next year, I believe. So, the only other thing that comes to my mind is perhaps some crossing, walk crossing along 460 that I'm not aware of, not to say there's not some need somewhere in the county. So, the question I would have is what project comes to your mind that we're going to use this money for?
Well, our top crash location, as I'm sure you will not be surprised to hear, is Route 419 in front of Tanglewood Mall. What we've been doing since that project was completed in December of 2020 is looking at the data to see if what we did is actually helping to resolve that issue. And what we have preliminarily seen is that the third lane to 220, as well as all the accommodations that have been put in place, is helping. So, our top location is starting to be addressed. Route 460, Challenger Avenue, is our second highest crash location amongst a variety of intersections.
Chick-fil-A.
West Rourdon, Valley Gateway, Cloverdale, and we have almost $30 million in smart-scale improvements that are now in design. Construction will be a few years out, but now in design to address West Rourdon, as well as Carson and Hunt Ridge and, oh, multiple intersections. There's six total, including Cloverdale. So, we've made a lot of progress on 460. We won't know if crashes are reduced until those projects are put in place, but the coordination of the signals with the city's signals has also improved traffic flow along that corridor, and as a result, also safety. So, we're making good progress on the number one and number two locations. Now, number three and number four and number five, you know, those numbers kind of change over time in terms of which ones are the highest crash locations. What we're, what we've also seen is that Route 418 at Colonial Avenue is a problem. VDOT did offset the left turn lanes on Route 418 in 2020, and so we're starting to see some change there. That's what some of this analysis will show us, is has that project really improved that intersection that much? What we've heard is that the yellow progressive arrows where you can turn left if it's clear, that was a challenge because the turn lane in front of you would block sight distance because of the curvature of the road, so people were getting comfortable and taking risks and getting hit. So, we believe that that has been resolved by offsetting those lefts. The next intersection that's starting to look not great is Brambleton at 418, and I've noticed personally that the signal timing on Brambleton turning left on the 418 has shortened. So, people are taking a little more risk there when they're trying to get through those yellows before it turns red, because you don't get many cars through that queue. So, that's something that we will definitely be looking at as a part of this process. VDOT's data and the Police Department data matches up pretty well. So, you know, we already have a great team in place, working with the Salem residency and with Sergeant Hoops and the Police Department, to look at that data. So, you know, we continue, we anticipate continuing to do that as a part of this study.
Thank you.
And just to add some more color to your comments, Megan, there are secondary road improvements that need to be made, and I'm going to give you an example. We're going to meet on tomorrow at 1:00. Sanderson Drive and Old Mountain Road is problematic in the morning and evening, and along that road is industrial land that's being marketed, and it's going to put more truck traffic perhaps on that road, which also, which today, between Bodatok and Roanoke County, there's no through trucks allowed. Now, that's not to say there's not a truck originating and terminating there, which you could argue and say it's not a through truck because it's not going over the road to go someplace else, but those improvements are going to have to come, and, you know, we'll get into more of that tomorrow. So, there is no shortage of where you can use this money. And I will just tell you this, that if they start engineering and construction on 418-220, this is going to be gridlock city over here when that starts, and I'm not sure you want to, you want to put your money on something right now that's going to precede a major overhaul of that intersection, because it's going to be challenging. So that's something that we will definitely be looking at as a part of this process. VDOT's data and the police department data matches up pretty well. So, you know, we already have a great team in place working with the Salem residency and with Sergeant Hoops in the police department to look at that data. So, you know, we anticipate continuing to do that as a part of this study.
Thank you.
And just to add some more color to your comments, Megan, there are secondary road improvements that need to be made. And I'm going to give you an example. We're going to meet on tomorrow at 1 o'clock. Sanderson Drive and Old Mountain Road is problematic in the morning and evening, and along that road is industrial land that's being marketed and is going to put more truck traffic perhaps on that road, which also... which today between Bodatoc and Roanoke County, there's no through trucks allowed. Now, that's not to say there's not a truck originating and terminating there, which you could argue and say it's not a through truck because it's not going over the road to go someplace else. But those improvements are going to have to come, and, you know, we'll get into more of that tomorrow. So there is no shortage of where you can use this money. And I will just tell you this, that if they start engineering and construction on 419-220, this is going to be gridlock city over here when that starts. And I'm not sure you want to... you want to put your money on something right now that's going to precede a major overhaul of that intersection because it's going to be challenging for everyone that uses it every day. And if you think you've got problems down the road here with Buck Mountain and the traffic circle now, we haven't seen nothing yet. And I don't mean to pour cold water on any project. It's just the reality of it.
And that project, like with the 419 project in front of Tanglewood Mall, VDOT did not close lanes during daytime hours.
Yeah.
So we anticipate that the same thing will happen with the Diverging Diamond interchange, is that lanes will not be closed during regular, you know, peak hours.
Yeah.
It'll be off hours.
Sure.
Where lanes are closed. So it's not going to be fun, but hopefully it won't be terrible.
But I would tell you this, Chick-fil-A is problematic during certain high peak periods of the day at 419... at 460 in West Rourdon, and no one seems to want to do anything about it other than what's already in the mill and planned. So, you know, if it continues to be the second highest intersection, it seems that we're going to need to make darn sure that what those improvements are going to do is going to reduce those crashes at that intersection because we'll be back if it doesn't.
And that's part of what VDOT's looking at.
They'll be back contacting us, too.
But to tap into the dollars under the Infrastructure Act, you've got to do this first.
Yes, we need a plan. It all starts with a plan and then implementation.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, I concur with what everybody's saying. These funds will help with that. But Megan, I want to let you know in the Oak Grove area on 419, starting from Cavespring Corner, going all the way over to Caggy Village, there's a lot of left-hand turn lanes that are stacked side by side, and you can't see around turning left. And I was... thank goodness I wasn't in an accident, but I was in the left-hand turn lane turning left right at the Lady of Nazareth, and the lady was turning left right into traffic and she got hit. And I know my truck's tall, I'm right there, she's coming right at me, and, you know, she can't see the traffic coming down that way. So it doesn't have to be a signalized intersection, it can be just a left-hand turn. So, you know, I hope you'll be able to... this action plan will cover stuff like that also.
And we have looked at 419 in the past. There was an excellent study done by the Regional Commission and VDOT in 2010 that we still use to this day. And we do have the new smart scale application that was just approved and funded in the Oak Grove area between Stony Brook and Grandin Road Extension.
Okay.
There will be some intersection improvements there. And then the second phase of that will apply for again in round six, and that will be from Grandin Road Extension to Caggy Road at Caggy Village. So that'll also make some improvements to those intersections that are dangerous. And a lot of times it's the traffic coming off of the side streets, turning left onto our major roadways, and those folks are getting hit.
Yeah. And another thing, when we just had the Galen School of Nursing, that signal only allowed three cars. If you were going down 419 and turning left, only three cars could get through. We need to let VDOT know. We need a little more time on that.
And that's part of the challenge with the adaptive signal control that VDOT implemented in 2020, is that it's... the signals are looking to preserve capacity on Route 419, so it's not necessarily serving the side streets all that well.
Right.
But it's keeping Route 419, you know, one of our busiest corridors in the entire county, moving. So that's... it's a trade-off, and it's tricky, certainly.
Okay. Have a back entrance for the school of nursing.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
I think the takeaway here is we don't get transportation dollars every day directly from the federal government, and hopefully this will lead to even more. Normally it comes to the federal government, to the state, and then it gets divided through some program with the state, six-year improvement, smart scale, whatever you want to call it. So it's kind of good to tap on these funds directly coming to us, and so this will probably reap some benefit down the road as well. So good luck with that.
Thank you. This is the first time we've contracted straight with federal highway administrations since I've been here on any program. So we'll see how it goes. It's very different from VDOT.
We appreciate your good work. You continue to do great things, Megan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. So F, appointments. Is there any board member that may have an appointment that has not yet given it to the clerk? I know we still have some vacancies that I would really like to see them filled in a timely way. It's... there's been several vacancies for a while, and I know there's been some discussion about it, but we need to continue to work on that and try to expedite those vacancies. Moving on to item G, the consent agenda. Is there any board member who wishes to remove an item?
No. Sorry? Did I miss something?
No. Paul's misbehaving.
Straighten up. I'll have to get my classroom hat on. So consent agenda, item G. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, item H, citizen comments and communications. Have we had anybody sign up to speak?
No, ma'am.
So item I, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the reports?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, item J, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Peters?
So, over this past weekend, we had a couple young kids that went missing for a brief while over in Vinton. So I would just like to encourage everybody to stay safe, know where your kids are, but I am thankful both of them were found safe. The other thing I wanted to say was, I know I used to say it more often back in my early days on the board, but, you know, through the last little bit as I'm out and about more and people have stopped by my office, I just... I truly want to say thank you to the employees at Roanoke County. I mean, we sit up here as five of us and we like to talk about plans and we like to talk about what we think will be good, but it's up to ultimately the county administrator who has to catch the brunt of our request and pass it down to the department heads like Mr. Blanton and the Chief of Police, and, you know, then they move it through their departments. But ultimately, you know, five of us can do nothing, you know, whether it's the people come by. And I had a complimentary... one of the trash pickups the other day. It's just, you know, all of our people across the county do a fabulous job, and I'm very proud to be a board member. I'm proud of the work that they do for our citizens each and every day, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great news today from the chief police about SROs. I think we're kind of on a momentum and it's headed in the right direction, and pretty soon we will all be satisfied when all the schools have permanent assignments there. Today I attended, along with staff, the Regional Chamber Blue Ridge Series at the Vinton War Memorial. They had three topics they talked about today. One was the state of law enforcement, and Eric Orange, our sheriff, participated in that discussion. A lot of good representation from the community, but a couple of things stood out. And they talked about regional communications, and there definitely was a lot of that today. But that's the success of a lot of the law enforcement efforts is the regional communications among the chiefs. The Attorney General's Office had someone speak, Maggie Clary, Special Counsel of the Attorney General. And one of the facts she indicated today was three to 5% of the same offenders are committing 50% of the violent crimes, according to the Attorney General's Office, and Operation Ceasefire in 12 of cities around Virginia is addressing that and showing declines in eight cities. I didn't get those eight cities, though, and don't recall if they were mentioned or not, but that's some good work by the Attorney General's Office. There also was discussion on the state of arts and entertainment. The Salem Ritz-Hucks were represented, along with Pete Eschleben from Roanoke outside and someone from the Toddman Museum. Some good discussions on that topic. And then there was five economic development directors and/or specialists who took the podium and spoke. Megan Baker with Roanoke County did an excellent job representing us at the podium. Ken McFadden with Bodatoc was there, Mark Nelson, Tommy Miller with Salem, and Marshall Stanley with Vinton. And it's definitely... a point was made that whatever we do in any locality, it impacts its economic development everywhere because people live everywhere around the valley. And, you know, one thing that stood out in my mind when I was listening to all this is working, you go in the state of Virginia and be 15 minutes away from the next locality. I mean, 15 minutes to Vinton or 15 to 20 to Glenver or Salem or Bodatoc. So no wonder we all have to, you know, be thinking regionally because not everybody can live in one location and not everybody can attract everything in one location. So it's a... it was a great discussion, and there'll be more coming in the future, I'm sure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
I want to repeat some of the comments that Mr. Peters made about our county staff. The specific example, a couple of weeks ago, county drainage crew was doing some work near where I live, and they were doing a great job, and they were slowed down because a lot of rain was occurring. But they had a culvert under the road that was largely filled with silt and leaves and all kinds of stuff. And I got to give credit to Jeff Altis, the foreman. He didn't send one of his guys to go into the culvert to clean it out. He crawled in himself, and I was just amazed watching him do this. So I want to give a shout out to Jeff and his crew and Butch Workman. They just did a great job, but it just amazed me that he actually crawls into this culvert. And I'm not quite sure what kind of interesting animals or snakes might be in there, but he did. So we have some good people, and let them know that their work is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, I, too, want to talk about the SOR issue that we just heard, which is great news. We all wanted that, and, Mr. Peters, you're exactly right. The school board was a harsh critic to us specifically in saying it wasn't one of our priorities, which I think that is an insult to our body. So we'll see if they respond to what Chief Poindexter has done now, and looks like he's going to turn it around, and we're going to have that. So just kudos to Chief Poindexter for doing that. We did have, like Jim mentioned, we had the Bent Mountain Library reopening, and the first thing that I told the crowd is that I asked to make sure it was covered by insurance. So the water pipes that come overhead are now underground, so we will not have a water problem there anymore. And they also have a flow meter, so if water's moving over the weekend and they see it, it'll alarm, hit somebody's app, and we'll be good. So new innovation, but the library looks absolutely terrific. The General Services did a great job of putting that together. Jim outfitted it very well. All new, brand-new books. And, you know, I thought, eh, it might be five, 10 people there. Heck, no. The book club, kids, families, the community center folks. I mean, we probably had 35, 40 people there. So it was crowded when we went in, but it was great. That crowd up there in Bent Mountain, they are energized, and they're just... they love that little community, that community center. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So I just make one quick comment regarding a community meeting that I attended last night for the Glenver community regarding greenway possibilities from the Green Hill Park area to Montgomery County, and there was a robust crowd there also. There was probably, I don't know, 30 to 40 people. Megan, is that about right? And once again, I'm sorry?
38.
38, there you go. And once again, a shout out to staff because there was a large number of staff there. They were very interactive with our citizens, and we heard, you know, all the positivity. It was a great crowd and also took notice some of the concerns. So it was very worthwhile and really appreciated everyone turning out for that. It was good, and I appreciated the good work of staff. Excellent job. So moving on, item K is a work session. We have a work session scheduled to discuss drainage recommendation with the Board of Supervisors with Mr. Tariq Manir. And then we will go into a closed meeting, and I'm going to make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711.A.5, discussion concerning the expansion of an existing business or industries where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding its facilities